To the regular council meeting for the city of Utica for Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ivan Namo, would you lead us, please, sir?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everybody. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Good evening. Sakura?
Here.
O'Donnell?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Torenzi?
Here.
Deanna's absent. Robinson?
Here.
And Mayor Calendrino?
One absent, but we do have a quorum. At this point in the meeting, we open up the floor for anyone that has public comments to address City Council. You'll be given three minutes to speak, and this would be for any comments for items listed on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address council tonight? You're more than welcome. Just state your name and address, please.
Tom Glasgow, 45259 Cass Avenue, Utica, Michigan. Longtime resident of Utica. Definitely, I'm talking about the Seventh Amendment to the ground lease. Right now, I think the city's lost enough money on that, straight around a quarter million dollars. If you figure out, if we would've got the $60,000 a year that they weren't paying for the building that should've been up, that would've been 360, about a million, about 100,000 that they paid in penalties. I figure we lost about a quarter million dollars. I don't think the penalty, the $30,000 is enough. If anything, it should be a lot more. It should actually be a penalty where it forces them to put the building up. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else from the public that'd like to speak to council? As there's no further comments, in your package is all the items listed under consent. I would be looking for a motion to approve all items in consent business.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Sakura?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Deanna's absent. Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. No unfinished business correspondence or correspondence under new business. Tonight, our first item is special conditional use for 46961 Van Dyke. Ivan, would you step to the podium?
Good evening.
And give us your name and business address.
My name is Ivan Namo, 403961 Vandyk Avenue.
And what are you here tonight for, sir?
I'm here for special land use. 403961 Vandyk, doing car dealership. I'm trying to, I'm trying to do everything that requirement from the city and do some renovation to the property also.
And the petitioner is currently the owner of Vandyk Motors, which is right at the southwest corner of Vandyk and Greeley, and he's moving his business to 49, 46961 Vandyk is the former location of Utica rental.
Is that the right address?
43961.
Shouldn't it 44961? Not 4691?
It's 46961.
Yeah, let's put it at 21 Vandyk.
Yeah, that's the right address.
Yeah, it's not the right address.
It's 43961.
Yes, 43961.
Yeah. I need to say, it's like...
How do we have it wrong in every single spot that I'm looking at?
But it's not on the...
Oh, yeah.
On the, on the Montgomery County planning sheet.
Yep, it is wrong on the AIS form, but it's right in all the documents. Let me just make sure. Good catch, Councilman Ryan.
What my address is.
So for the record, the correct address is 43961 Vandyk. So the petitioner did appear before planning, gave a very thorough outline, I believe it was unanimous vote, and our planner did recommend approval. I think there was a couple little minor changes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm just proposing, there was some parking spaces that were adjacent to Vandyk that were technically located in the road right of way, so he was made aware of that before Planning Commission and had, will be amending the site plan to remove those parking spaces. So that is, that is no longer an issue. He will be putting up the appropriate screening between the adjacent residential property. I believe he's going to be doing a six-foot-high privacy fence, which goes above and beyond the standards of the ordinance. So that was nice because there will be cars parked there and that will give appropriate screening. He's not doing any additional lighting, so there'll be no negative impact to the neighbors there. The only other item that was not, I wouldn't say of concern, is that he's proposing to plant grass and do some landscaping on the side adjacent to Christman Street, which is good because right now it's just dirt and gravel, but that is technically in city right of way, assuming Christman is a, not a private road, it's a city-owned road. So my recommendation was just that City Council grant him approval to put landscaping in that right-of-way area with the knowledge that he will be responsible for maintaining it. And then I also did encourage the applicant to look at some landscaping or grass along Vandyk as well, to sort of separate from the road right-of-way and pavement there, and then you have sidewalk, and then his business, just to make it a little bit more of a green space and freshen up the site and also help with traffic flow as well. So those are all recommendations that were given to him by Planning Commission, but other than that, it is a permitted use, special conditional use, and he's meeting all of the other requirements. He's going to repave the parking lot and restripe it, and it will be an improvement to the site. There's a lot of the outdoor storage that there, that's there now, and there'll be additional screening and, like I said, some of the plantings that will provide additional screening as well. So, happy to answer any of the questions.
And at the planning public hearing, there were a few residents that did show up and had concerns about adding a privacy fence to separate the residents from the business, and Mr. Namo agreed to do that. I believe it was a six-foot, six-foot vinyl or wood fence.
Yep. And then also the access drive off of Christman, there's a fence there right now, and the applicant will not be utilizing that access drive, so it'll only be Ingrass and Egress off of Vandyk. So there was some concerns about traffic, test-driving cars on Christman, but that would be very difficult to get to, just being able to turn off of Vandyk, so we think we're comfortable with that as well.
Any questions from council? If not, we would be looking for a motion to approve special conditional use, and I better get this address right, at 43961 Vandyk, to allow a used car sales lot pending a five-foot side setback on the Christman side of the parcel, installing and maintaining greenery from the property line to Christman, and having four dedicated parking spots for customers with one of them being handicap parking.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Torenzi. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Deanna's absent. Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is a resolution for protecting the Clinton River and Lake St. Clair. As we've all probably seen in the news, there's a lot of talk right now, a lot of, Candace Miller is putting a lot of pressure on leadership in Oakland County to stop dumping water and sewage into the Clinton River. Obviously, we in Utica see that as a problem every time it floods. We manage it well until Oakland County opens the valves and lets the water flow. Other communities have been adopting similar resolutions in support of two House bills, House Bill 5917 and 5918, that look to address these issues and put a little bit more transparency when a county dumps raw or partially-treated sewage into a neighboring county. I'm not going to go ahead and read this whole resolution. Basically, what it is, is a supporting those two House bills that are now working their way through the state legislature. At the end, we'll be sending, if this gets approved, we'll be sending this to all our leadership at the county and state level. So I would be looking for a motion to adopt the resolution of support for House Bills 5917 and 5918.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council?
Oakland County has been using the Clinton River for a drain, a sewage drain, because they don't want to build the facilities to treat the water. So I think their penalty, last I remember, was $25,000 each time they do it, which is nothing because we wind up in Macomb County paying the cost, our beaches and stuff get closed, everything else, because we are one big giant drain, cesspool drain for them. So I hope that when this is all adopted and that, there becomes some, from our legislatures...
Yes, sir. It's soon to be. It's soon to be.
Just, there's some bite in what this is going to do.
So remember those numbers when you make the trek up to Lansing, all right?
Sure.
Not naming any names.
No pressure, though, Ryan. No pressure. Thank you.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Deputy Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Deanna's absent. Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. We'll get that signed and off to all the appropriate folks. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Seventh Amendment to the ground lease with GSE, and we're fortunate to have Ms. Dana Schmidt here tonight.
Good evening, Dana Schmidt, President of the United Shore Professional Baseball League and GS Entertainment. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight and request the Seventh Amendment to the ground lease, which is in the packets. A little update on development, the project is moving forward. The wheels of some areas of government turn slowly and, but as an update, we did get, Eagle did give us a grant to assist with the environmental issues on the site, which Macomb County took the lead on applying for that for us, and the Macomb County Board of Commissioners did approve that in September. We've had a kickoff meeting with Eagle. There's a sign-up that you probably saw on the site that was put up, and SME, which is our consultant, has submitted the first work plan to Eagle for Michelle Bacon's review. I think that was last week, so we haven't, we don't have the feedback on that yet, but I'm assuming that will get approved, and then they can design, work on designing the methane gas mitigation system that has to go under the building. And we also, our architectural drawings, except for that one piece, the methane gas mitigation system, are complete and ready to be submitted. The only other thing that we're waiting on right now is a second piece is, we have applied to the Michigan Economic Development Court for a community revitalization plan grant, and that's in review right now. That was actually submitted in June. It was resubmitted in July based on feedback, and we've had, I think, three rounds of questions that have come back that we've responded to. I was hoping to have a final answer from Dominic Romano from MEDC for this meeting tonight, and he replied and said there's one more department that is having a meeting tomorrow. So we will know one way or the other on that very shortly. I'm anticipating that we will break ground on this probably in the early spring, you know, because we're going to get into winter conditions right now. But we are, basically, almost everything is ready to go on this project, just waiting for the MEDC, but one way or the other, the drawings will be submitted. They've just encouraged us not to submit those drawings until they give us an answer because they could have changes that would impact those drawings. So, but other than that, we're ready to go and didn't anticipate it would take three to four months for them to get back to us, but in any event, I think on the environmental side, we've probably moved that as fast as we could, and that, so that piece is not, we're not holding back on that. That is all moving forward at this time, and we should be able to move forward to break ground. Probably, I would anticipate, maybe late February, early March would be our goal.
Nice. Any questions for Ms. Schmidt?
You said you are anticipating some funds from MEDC?
We've applied for it, but...
Is the project sink or swim if you get it or don't get it, or is this going to go forward?
I mean, the project's going forward, but...
Well, I'm just making sure. I'm saying if you get the money or don't get the money, you're going to build this project.
That's what we've committed to, and we just, our, our current financing model with our bank does include, you know, MEDC, so we would have to go back and get a revised commitment letter from the bank, but at this point, I mean, that was what we committed to, but this was always part of what we wanted to seek because we're in, it's a brownfield site, and we're in a downtown location, so it qualifies for us to apply for this grant. So that's just, we're waiting to hear from, from Dominic. It's not a guarantee that we'll get it, but it's something that we, we wanted to seek for this project because, especially because it is, you know, added some additional elements to the building that ultimately got approved, so. But we're not anticipating not doing this building, but it's certainly something that we would like to be able to secure.
I guess you answered my question. Just my concern is, I do have some, I share some of your thoughts, Tom's thoughts over there. This is going on and on. This is the seventh ground lease. I'll never vote for an eighth one, so, an extension. So I'll just, that's what my concern is. If all of a sudden that money isn't there, then you're going to come back and tell us, well, we can't do it because the money's not there. So I, that's just, you know in advance, a year in advance of where I stand.
Yep, that's not something that, we, when we came forward with the site plan and requested approval for that, you know, we didn't say that we weren't building this building, but, you know, this is certainly something I think, you know, I was hoping to have an answer, like I said, before tonight, and it's been taking three and a half months for a review and decision from MEDC on this. So, I mean, certainly, I needed to wait to get their answer because they won't fund anything that is spent before they make the decision on the grant, same with Eagle, so. But, you know, we should have an answer on that imminently, and at this point, with winter conditions, we would probably push to the spring anyway because we don't want to get into building in the middle of the winter. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
So if you don't get this money, is it possible we could be here in a year?
That, that basically was my question.
We've, we've, we've committed to building the building. Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify because that's what you asked.
Yep.
Any other questions? So we would be looking for a motion to approve the Seventh Amendment to the ground lease as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi, support. Support by Robinson. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Deanna's absent. Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Moving on to department reports, I'll kick things off. Just want to remind everyone that the downtown Utica Christmas tree lighting celebration is scheduled for December 14th at 7:00 PM. As always, there's going to be a great fireworks show. This year, Lori Barcheck from the Reptarium and Legacy Aquarium is our celebrity guest. It's going to be a great night, so mark your calendars. I'd like to thank Lori, our city clerk, our deputy clerk, and the entire city office, and the election crew for a great job. I think we had record vote, voting this year. Everything was very smooth. We had some small delays at the Flickinger precinct, but the staff addressed those quickly. So great job. I know it's a ton of work, and it gets, seems like it gets to be more and more work every election due to state-mandated changes to election law, but the Utica crew did a great job. I'd also like to give congratulations to Councilwoman Faith Torenzi, Councilman Tom Dion, and Councilman-elect Lou Backus, who's in the crowd tonight. Congratulations on great campaigns. I'd also like to congratulate current councilman, but soon to not be councilman, Ron Robinson, for being elected as state rep for Michigan District 58. He's going to be representing Utica, Shelby Township, Sterling Heights, and Sliver Warren, if I'm not mistaken. So I know he's going to do great things up there in Lansing, so great job done by all. We got a lot of great infrastructure-type stuff going on in the city, but I'm going to let our DPW superintendent deal with that when he gets to his report, but there's a lot of good news going on in that regard as well. Anyone from council having something to report?
Sure. I would just like to mirror the mayor and congratulate the mayor and Tom Dion on their reelection. We're blessed to have you serve us. And congratulations to elect, Councilman-elect Lou Backus. I'm excited to, I'm looking forward to working with you. And Ron, I'm just so proud of you, and congratulations. You know, we, you know, we've texted, but I'm so proud of you of what you did, so good job. And I want to thank the Utica residents for coming out in full force in this very important election year. I enjoyed talking with people and meeting you at the polls, and I have a special shout out to the man who said to me, "Those men never let you get a word in edgewise." And you all know that's the truth, you know? So shout out to you and thank you. But I want to thank you for trusting me to be your councilwoman again. And Mike, it's been nice getting to know you. I appreciate your insight on the fire department, because I've learned a lot of things that I didn't know, and I really appreciate you doing the Toys for Tots every year. That is so cool and so good. And lastly, I feel, I feel like I make an acceptance speech, but this is the only time I can talk without these people over-talking me, but a big thank you to our superstars, Lori Cook and Becky Libranoy. I was here, I watched what they did, I saw how hard they worked, and they did a great job, and I'm really proud. I'm really proud of our city and really honored to be here, so, thank you. Thank you. That's all I have to say. And now you can all talk all night.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Torenzi. Does anyone else on council have anything to report? Councilman Ryan?
Yep, just, just follow up to the mayor's response on the Christmas tree lighting. The Utica Firefighters Foundation is doing our Toys for Tots drive. We have boxes currently set up in City Hall here and over at the library. We do our annual stuff and ambulance, collect Toys for Tots for, for the Marine Corps Drive. So come and drop some unwrapped new toys down, and we'll get them off to some needy kids.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on, Mr. Glasgow, do you have anything to report for, please? We have no report from planning, assessing, or building. Our library director, Ms. Francis, is excused tonight. Fire Chief Wilson.
Oh, I got that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Sakura had something.
Katie asked me to just remind everybody that we will have, be having our annual bake sale the same day as the Christmas tree lighting, and that will be going on from 5 o'clock, 5:00 PM till 9:00 PM. And there will also be a contest at the library again for a child to win the chance to set off the fireworks that night. The contest starts Monday, November 18th and finishes December 7th. Side note, the roof is done at the library. She's excited, hopefully. I know they did a good job, because they did a good job for me before. And I guess we're going to see you next week at the library board meeting. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Chief Wilson.
Yes, Mayor and Council, before you tonight, I need a agenda item for the 2025 agenda. We had a little bit of a glitch on our generator. Our installer went through another salesman, and the engineers came out, and we upgraded our generator, so it's a little larger, which required us to have DTE come in, and we had to go through the DTE box, and we have to put in some more equipment required by DTE, so that's the major reason we're here for the increase. So I would recommend that we receive the federal grant HMGP 4547.15, passed through the state police for the purchase of installation of a new generator. The project was included in the 2024 budget, but due to the circumstance, this is delayed. Implementation requiring an amendment for FY 2025 budget. DTE requirements increased the cost of installation from $15,009.52 to $22,006.57.65. The total cost of the generator with installation is now $70,974.65, and the federal participation is $42,030. I would like to have a motion to amend the 2025 general fund budget, increasing...
I think there was one before that, Chief.
Oh, motion to approve the purchase of the generator with installation from PMT Technologies that it cost us $70,974.65.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Sakura. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Deanna's absent. Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. And the second?
Second motion is to amend the budget of 2025 general fund budget, increasing other federal grants, 101-336-528000, UPFGEN, by $42,030, and equipment purchase, 101-336-981000, UPFGEN, by $71,000.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan?
Support.
Support by Sakura. Any discussion?
I have a question. So what is the total out of pocket? I mean, I, it looks like we're just increasing what we were going to spend by 7,000 or thereabouts.
It's a $6,700 increase.
I'm sorry?
It's a $6,075, I think it was.
Okay, and this was already approved last year?
Right.
So we have the money. It's not like we're...
You're just amending the, the increase on the installation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Madam Deputy Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Deanna's absent. Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight, sir?
We had the daylight savings change, change here, so I'll just remind the people, if you didn't change your smoke detector batteries, to please do that.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Klosny?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item I have for you is the M. Coles Justice Training Grant Award. During budget workshops, I discussed with you that I was going to be applying for a competitive grant to get a, a training VR system for our officers. So what this is, it's a virtual reality system that allows the officers to train without having to go out and actually use the equipment. It gives them the opportunity to, to utilize the TASER in multiple different environments that really just aren't available. It's a, it's a really neat system, excellent training, and it also kind of works on like de-escalation, video training, simulators and stuff. I applied for this grant and was awarded the grant through, through the state of Michigan. The total amount of this project is $25,241. Now, that's contingent on attaching that to a TASER 10 purchase, and one of, one of the grants that we're hopefully going to get in April is allowing some money for the, the department to buy TASER, so we'll be able to kind of piggyback, get that discount on the system. So the, the grant award from the state is $18,930, and that would be a match share amount of 25% from the city of $6,311. So this is money that I included in the budget. The, the revenue and the expense was included in the budget, and it was one of those items that was discussed that if we get the grants, then we can move forward on the project. So what I'm looking for is a, a motion to authorize the mayor to accept the training grant award from M. Coles, and then hopefully be able to purchase the system once... grant award from M Coles and then hopefully be able to purchase the system once we, we attach it to that TASER 10 purchase.
Chief, I'm wondering if we should include, you know, subject to receiving the other state, all right, this was a federal grant, wasn't it?
This is, this is a state grant and the other one is the other state grants-
Right.
That we're-
Well, should I, should we mention subject to receiving the grant for the actual equipment, right?
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
Okay.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Torenzi, any discussion from council?
Do we get to try, try the training? Can we go to the training?
Absolutely. Yep, yep. It's, it's virtual reality headset, so you just got to come. No, no, absolutely. Actually, I encourage all, all council members and stuff to, to come to training. Mayor and Councilman Robinson came to one of our firearms trainings and stuff, so, so really, I, I extend that invitation, come out, see what we're doing, test the stuff out, and absolutely, we'll, we'll, we'll let you know.
You know I'll be calling.
So.
Any further discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Dion is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. Your next item, Chief.
Uh, next item is the Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning, OHSP, 2025 Highway Safety Project Grant. This is another discussion I had during budget workshops. And what this is, is, is you'll see the Click It or Ticket, the OWI, the distracted driving, all the campaigns that the state does throughout Michigan throughout the, the year. And so, this is federal grant money that's passed down from the federal agencies to the state, to the county. And what this does is it gives our department, our city, a, a block of money to be able to run these enforcements. And it covers the officers' overtime wages and all their fringe benefits. So, the total amount that we got awarded from the county for this year was $32,034.84, which equates to about 500 hours of overtime coverage. So, this is in addition to what we currently have. So, we're able to put officers out there and specifically target some of these, these instances out there. So, it's, it's a great benefit to the city, because we're increasing manpower with federal grant money, and it's really not costing us anything. So, I'd be looking for a motion to accept the federal grant award in the amount of
So moved. Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Torenzi, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Dion is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, the, the next ones, you're going to have to bear with me, because this is kind of modifying my, my budget. I had included the money into the budget, but I need to kind of shift it into a, a different line item, so. Got some reading here. I'd be requesting a budget reallocation of $10,000 each, so a total of $30,000 from GL 101-301-505-108, and that's a highway safety grant. The seatbelt grant, GL 101-301-501-109, highway safety grant distracted driving, and GL 101-301-505-110, highway safety grant speeding. To the revenue account, other federal grants, GL 101-301-501-101-OHSP25.
That was a mouthful. So moved.
Support. Motion by Torenzi, support by Robinson, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Dion is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
All right, next one is request of budget reallocation of $30,000 from GL 101-301-709-001, and that's overtime federal grants. And that's going to the overtime federal grants, GL 101-301-709-001-OHSP25 by $30,000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by Robinson, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Dion is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
All right, last one on, on this one, and, and this is just to increase, because I had originally planned on $30,000. We got a little bit more. So, I'd be requesting a budget amendment to the Police Department Fiscal Year 25 Budget to increase the revenue, other federal grants, GL 101-301-505-101-OHSP25, and the expenditure overtime federal grants, GL 101-301-001-OHSP25 by $2,040.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Ryan, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Dion is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council. The final item I have for you, and this is the emergency medical dispatch cards. The EMD program, this is something that Police Department, Fire Department's been, been working on a while, the, the Macomb Medical Control, thank you, is, is starting to implement what's, what's called EMD dispatch. And essentially, what it is, is having our dispatchers start some life-saving procedures and stuff before police, fire, EMS get on scene. So, it's, it's training them. The system that I'm proposing is a flip card system, so they, they go to the card. Let's say it's a, a, a person down, not breathing, and it'll start going through some procedures that the dispatchers can start explaining to the person on scene to go ahead and start these life-saving procedures before our officers actually get on scene. So, it's really a, a great program designed to try and, and, and speed up the life-saving capabilities there. After looking through multiple systems, having multiple talks, this system really became the, the most fiscally responsible system to go to. Some were, if you look through your packet, in excess of $30,000, $40,000, $50,000. This system, for, for what we're paying, is, is really a, a, a nice, nice way to get into it at a, at a fiscally responsible price that, that we can all kind of live with. Part of, part of the, the budget talks was, was having the, the Fire Department kind of help out with their, their costs associated with, with dispatching. We didn't hire our, our dispatcher till about mid-end September, so there's a, a little bit of, of extra money in there that, that wasn't really allocated to fund. So, what I'd be looking for is to be able to utilize the money that we're going to use from the Fire Department to go ahead and, and help fund this. So, I'm, I'm just looking for a budget reallocation and not asking for any more money, just kind of moving the money around to be able to fund this system, make sure that the Fire Department, their medics and EMS are qualified under the Macomb County Medical Control Division for this. So, I'd be requesting approval to enter an agreement with APCO for the emergency medical dispatch card system.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by O'Donnell, any discussion?
And is this for $44.30, is that what it's costing?
That's correct. Yep, there's, there's, it's an online train, online train, the trainer manual, then the card system. There are some, some other training costs, but between the police and fire, we're going to handle that in our, in our own training budgets and stuff to get everybody handled.
Perfect, as long as there's no budget amendment, we're really happy.
Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Dion is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
And second, uh, request there is for budget reallocation of $4,430, and that's from salaried dispatch, GL 101-301-704-000, in the amounts of $2,780. And it's going to our meetings and trainings, GL 101-301-957-000, and $1,650 to equipment purchase, and that's GL 101-301-981-000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Torenzi, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Dion is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else tonight, Chief?
Just one, one quick update. I'm, I'm happy to let council know that we're going to start breaking ground on our dispatch tower, so that's actually going to start tomorrow. They were looking at starting last week, but unfortunately, because of some locations for some potential gas lines, we had to move some spots, but we're, we're looking forward to getting that, getting that started. The weather's been, been great.
He's getting ready to tie.
So, unfortunately, the, the-
Oh, my, my parking spot is gone.
It's getting moved. It's getting moved.
The mayor pro temp spot will be the location of our new dispatch tower, but we will be graciously-
Put him in, put him in up there.
Graciously relocating his parking spot. But, yes, we're, we're looking forward to getting this, getting this going and, and get this moved forward, and it's really going to-
So, did you hear what he said?
I want the tower named after me. You can keep this one, I'll find a new spot.
The Secora Tower, right?
We could, we could have you sign the cement and put your-
There we go.
But other than that, that's, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. DPW Superintendent, Mr. Wilder.
You notice how he waited till after you approved everything? Good evening, Mayor and council. First, congratulations, Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman Torenzi, Councilman Dion, Councilman Lou Backus, and soon-to-be state rep, Councilman Robinson. Congratulations on your electoral victories. I have one thing on the agenda today, and that is for the agreement with DeAngelo Brothers Incorporated for the lead service line replacement program. We did approve this through the grant of getting it done back in March 14th, 2023, with the HRC Project 202-30218, and that was through an MEDC grant project. But we did, um, we did finally get our, the, the agreement in, in place. It took a while because of some insurance issues and getting the wording with Seat Attorney and with HRC, but we finally got it. So, the scope of the project, as, as it states, is to replace approximately 130 service lines identified as wholly or partially constructed with lead or galvanized iron pipe materials in accordance, in accordance with the state of Michigan mandate. DeAngelo Brothers was selected and agreed to perform the replacements using the similar unit rates and pricing as provided in the attached 2020 Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, also known as SACAW contract. So, I am looking for a motion to approve the agreement for the lead water service line replacement program with DeAngelo Brothers Incorporated.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Secora, support by Robinson, any discussion from council? Yeah, the, one thing I would like to bring up, this is, we've really got a great deal.
Yes.
Because DeAngelo Brothers, the contractor, agreed to let us kind of ride on the contract from SACAW, right? Is that what you're saying? And those rates were determined, I think, in 2020?
2020.
So, we're getting 2020 rates for work that's being done in 2024. And we're getting that kind of that buy-one-get-one, you know, economy of scale discount as well. You know, they're a much bigger customer base, we're a little tiny city, so not only did we get 2020 prices, we also kind of got to ride on their larger volume pricing. So, this was a really great deal. HRC really helped us along with that.
100%.
Yep. Any further discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
Dion is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. As Mayor stated earlier, we do have a bunch of our projects coming to a close, which is very nice. We are completed with the lead service, uh, point inspections, so that's good. DPW handled that. We're working with the TMF grant that we received and the treasurer in getting reimbursements on that. The letters and the inventory was due October 16th, got that in. This is a fluid, uh, shall we say, program. It's first time for Eagle, so there are, it's probably going to be a lot of back-and-forth till they get everything we want, they want. But for the city of Utica, we hammered everything out with the help of HRC and obviously the crew going, going out there and doing the point inspections themselves. It, it's been pretty smooth. We are in the process of doing our restoration that haven't been completed till we finish, so you'll see a lot of cement work going around with the ones that we had to cut up sidewalks or partial of driveways. So, that's, we started on Monday. We did a couple last week, so those will hopefully be finished this week. We might have to go back for a couple of the, the lawn ones that are, that have been sinking when we filled back in. We're hoping that we can wait till spring to finish those out, but we are working on those. There will be letters that are, that need to go out this Friday to, to all the services, that all the addresses that have, that were known lead, known galvanized, or possibly either one of those, so working with HRC to get those letters out. There will be something on the water bill, and we will have a list of everything, all the addresses, so if people want to call in, either to City, City Hall or DPW, we can find out. We'll have that list right there handy, so yes, you, you have copper lines, or no, you do have lead lines. So, HRC, with these letters that are going out, there's going to be an agreement for us to get in their home to make these, because they're going to be on the list to get their lead lines replaced. So, there will be an agreement that they will have with HRC to be able to get in, make sure we check their, the inside again, and then what to expect about scheduling and when the service line will be replaced. So, that'll all be coming soon. Like I said, those letters need to go out on the 15th, according to Eagle's mandate. Pioneer Park Pavilion, moving along, uh, moving along, we did get the parts of the pavilion in. We're hoping that we can get that cement laid before the winter. Obviously, there's a big hole at Pioneer Park. It is, it is marked off for safety, but if we don't get to it till the winter, I'm requiring them to put a fence up, so it's even more, because it's going to fill, obviously. We haven't had any, any issues that I'm aware of, of anybody getting in there, but it is just orange fencing right now. So, if it will last the, the winter, I'm going to make sure that they put up a construction fence around it for a little more safety, to secure the site. Van Dyke median, I'm sure you've seen, the median is up, the, the curb did one curb on one day, the other curb on the other day, and the center median after that. Traffic's been horrible, we understand, we've been getting a lot of phone calls, but it's, seems like it's the same people that were complaining about the left turns, or complaining about the, the traffic going on. Hopefully, mid-next week, the delineators will be put in, so it's a line of delineators with another little inch and a half, two-inch yellow ramp with white delineators and amber stripes on them, so that will go on the median itself, and then they will also go on the, the front side toward the north side to the curb stop on, to, not the curb stop, I'm sorry, the stop bar on Hall Road, and then all the way to the stop bar at Canal. So, that whole strip will be, will be covered. So, if someone wants to make a U-turn, someone will, will probably try. They'll have to do, they'll have to go very far down to do it, but the curb is great. If you've seen it, we'll probably, we'll probably paint the ends a little bit of yellow We'll probably, we'll probably paint the ends a little bit of, of yellow just so you can see it until all the, um, everything's put in place. So knocking wood, everything will be good with that one. North Point pavement, yes.
Okay, on the, um, on the median, the one thing that I, I noticed, um, as I was heading northbound, is there any type of signage or something that we can put up that says, like, hey, there's a curb here? Because I can foresee someone just driving right down it, right between the two.
Once the delineators get in there, you're gonna be, you're gonna be able to see it. It's, that'll give you your 10, 12 feet before the actual curb. So I don't think a sign is gonna be needed. Uh, there's no sign that was required through MDOT. Or, all that would have been in, in the progress. So obviously, if we end up having any issues, might, maybe something we can circle back and look into. I don't foresee any issues. If someone hits it, it's gonna be because of reckless driving, shall we say. But yeah, once, once the, yeah, right now, I, I can understand what you're saying. But once the delineators get in, I don't think we're gonna have an issue because you're gonna see that coming forward. Plus, you're gonna have that big gap at Canal coming that way, so we should be all right.
Okay.
Uh, North Point Pavement Repairs, it's the same company that is doing the, uh, Van Dyke median, which was L. Anthony Construction. The, the spots that we had, the money allocated for are taken care of. So there's, I think, four or five spots on North Point that were deemed the worst areas. So those have all been paved. Um, we did a couple patching with, with our patch machine on other spots. And then, um, the sidewalk is all removed on North Point. We're just waiting for the final erosion, um, permit from Macomb County. Fencing is all, the, the silt fencing is all up. So once that goes through, they weren't allowed to, um, start putting their forms yet until that permit came through. So that's all we're waiting on. L. Anthony was ready to pour last week when they did. It would have been done, but the permit is what's holding us up on that. We talked about the lead, the service line replacement. Davis Street is, um, finalized. Uh, the, the, uh, the bollards have been put in for safety around the, the, uh, panel. The floor has been completed. We, they do have to come back to do the, the rest of the well. They wanted to make sure that the, the floor was epoxy and sat. So, uh, that is expected for next week. Um, crossing our fingers. But everything else is running. It, it, the, the dispatch, I know it's gotten a lot of alarms. It is a very sensitive, but a, a good alarm, so it has an intrusion alarm. If anybody, as soon as that lid lifts up, we get an email. I get a text, dispatch gets a text. It's a great, it's a great system that we end up going through, and, you know, I thank HRC for getting this one. Sewer Rehab Project is complete. The last thing they were doing, we're finishing up today, was the, from the point repair over by the gas station Hydro Pros. They were, um, repaving that area. They weren't finished when I left today. I, I, I'm not sure if they finished, um, after I left. So that's going, that went well. I think, I think that's it. I have, we did get a letter of resignation from Ken Bonkowski. January 22nd, uh, is when he plans on retiring after 31 years. I did start, um, getting, uh, I, I have 10 applications for the spots. We do expect another employee to be retiring. Have not received his letter yet, so I won't mention the names. But, um, you did, it wasn't my budget to hire someone prior to them leaving so we can get them training. So, um, unfortunately Lori was out, is out this week ill, but we're setting up, um, interviews coming up. We got a couple really good applicants that are actually from other, um, DPW departments. It's nice that they want to come here, so, and then a couple, uh, fresh faces too. So we'll, we'll see what we have and, and, and move on from there. Uh, we have the tree for the Christmas tree lighting from the Domdrowski family on Grant Park. Uh, we are scheduled to get that on December 9th, um, so we can start, um, getting it all decorated to move it over for the 14th, for the, um, tree lighting. Um, I spoke with Brett already for the Christmas lights that were approved today to try to get us one of the first ones scheduled. We have to get our wreaths up so he can get out here, so that'll be the next thing. You'll see the banners coming down and the wreaths going up. Just wanna, to let residents know that we do not pile our leaves into the streets. You have to clean them up yourselves. We, we pick up the ones that are blown, which we have started the street sweeping on Cass today. But please do not rake them into the street and expect the city to pick up. We do not have that service. And we do not burn leaves as well, as the Fire Department knows that we had. Was that, that was today, right? Or is it yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, so, um, other than that, that's it. Sorry for being long-winded.
Lots of good stuff happening. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is our treasurer, Mr. Paternoster.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have on your, uh, agenda this evening a request from, uh, myself to, uh, purchase from the BSNA accounting, uh, system, a, uh, module for tracking fixed assets. This module was not purchased when we initially engaged the services of BSNA because, uh, it wasn't deemed, uh, that critical of a accounting, uh, function. However, with, uh, the increased use of federal grants to finance, uh, assets and the increased, uh, requirements for tracking the assets that we purchase with those federal funds, I've come to the conclusion that having a, uh, an accounting system that integrates directly with our accounts payable and our, um, general ledger system, is, uh, very important and will, uh, avoid, uh, issues with the, uh, auditors and the feds and cut down on some of, uh, the time that it takes to keep track of these assets. So I'm asking, uh, for approval, uh, to acquire from BSNA their Fixed Assets.net accounting module at a cost of $4,685 payable from GL Account Number 101, 253, 731, 010. Software support. This will require an amendment to the general fund budget, which I will request if my first request is approved.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Trenzey. Any discussion?
I'm trying to let you talk.
So funny.
Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Trenzey. Uh, Deanna's absent. Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, second, uh, request is a motion to amend the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget increasing the GL Account Number 101, 253, 731, 010. Software support by the sum of $4,690.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trenzey, support by Robinson. Uh, just a brief discussion from me. We always hate amending the budget, but the reason we need this is because we're getting so much grant money. So it's a good problem to have for $4,690 bucks. You know, we're getting hundreds of thousands of dollars in federal grants, so, uh, just so everyone knows. It's not necessarily a bad thing in this case.
The juice is definitely worth the squeeze.
Yes.
That's one way of putting it. Any further discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
Deanna's absent. Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else to report, Mr. Paternoster?
Nothing further tonight, other than a reminder that we're in November, which means December 1st, winter tax bills will be going out, um, or shortly before that. So keep, be on the lookout for your tax bill.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Madam Deputy Clerk, anything to report from administration tonight?
Well, I know election has been on the top of everyone's mind, so, um, I thought I'd give you some numbers. So we had 1,293 voters in person at the precinct. We had 1,090 absent voters, and we had 476 early voters that took advantage of the Sterling Heights, Heights locations that we had, giving us about 68% turnout in voting. So that's a lot.
That's a lot.
And, um, yes, we did work very hard and, uh, we got it going, so...
There was a lot more early voters than last time too, wasn't it?
Yes, yes.
That's good to see.
There were a lot more voters, period. So everyone hopefully was heard, but thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Ms. Schmidt, Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I just wanted to give, um, council a little heads up, that we, we are in the process of creating the new master plan for Parks and Rec. So the survey's been out for, um, the, for the public for about, uh, about a month or maybe a little longer than a month. We should have it ready for the 30-day review in December, and then we'll be looking for a vote from council in January to update the, uh, Parks and Rec plan. So hopefully Parks and Rec can also get some of those, uh, grants. So everyone, you know, and, um, congratulations to everybody. And, um, Becky and Lori, you guys did do a great job.
Uh, nothing from Historic Commission or our city attorney tonight. At this point in the meeting, we open up the floor for communication from the public for any item at all. Doesn't have to be on the agenda. You'll be given three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to address council? All right, if not, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Robinson, support by Ryan. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
Deanna's absent. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.